Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Anybody here want to talk to us before we start our meeting? Okay. I will tell you that I received two Board Let's Talk communications today. Both were asking about whether we were discussing equity or equality. And we are discussing equity, and that is what I told them. So just so you know that. And since Mr. Karpak and Mr. Avery are both here, before we do consent agenda, I thought we would start with them so that they don't have to listen to all that.
Oh, I need to share sharing with you, Devin, right? You got it now?
I believe so. I'll manage to screw this up in some way, even though we've been doing this for a year now. Because I actually have not used Zoom that much because I'm great with Google Meets because that's what we use every day. How do I actually share?
Down at the bottom of your screen is a green button that says Share Screen. So click on that.
I found it.
Okay.
Well, Devin's doing that, getting that started. My quick statement would be that Otter Valley has always had a very, very strong relationship, very strong support of the learning that occurs within the programs that you find within the technical education. And Mr. Karpak is our most recent, he's our most recent iteration of an educator who is very creative and is thinking in some fairly broad and exciting ways about where we can take tech ed within Otter Valley. So I'm very excited to be here. It's really Devin's going to present lots of his ideas. You know, we work together, but I'm really excited to hear, let you all see what Devin has been working on and thinking about. So I'll mute and let my good friend Devin dive in.
Thank you. And let me do the obligatory, you can see this in me, right? And hear me.
We see the screen and we hear you. You are a tiny little box on the side, but if you're going to do a dance routine, we will miss it.
I do a very bad, like, I don't even know what this is called. You do the arm thing from the 80s, which I was five during, so as we exited it. So thank you so much for having me this evening. First off, year two, not exactly what we were expecting, obviously, but this is the, we're wrapping up the second year I've been here. And thank you again for hiring me in 2019. I can't, I always wanted to find a place to call home for my career, and this is it. And I'm very happy and pleased to be working with the students of Otter Valley, the administration, several board members as well, and especially Jim and Jean. This has just been a dream come true for me. So I guess where to start is welcome to the basement. I wanted to give you the full, the full experience. So here we are. I even wrote something on the board, and one of my students yesterday drew that cool flower, which is probably even tinier now. But what I'm going to do, my goal for tonight is kind of, is partially informative, mainly informative, what we accomplished during the first year and where we're going. I'm going to try not to overshare, as I tend to do, keep it a little bit more focused on where we are and where we're definitely headed. As with so many things recently, it's changing and updating daily and in a positive way, unlike some of the things we have experienced over the last year. So Otter Valley Union High School's Tech Ed program. So this right here, I think summarizes kind of a little bit of my philosophy of this, is building community, having a little bit of fun, and also a lot of learning along the way, but also kind of developing an identity around those things, the creativity of students. So last year, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, this is some branding that I started doing to give us an identity down here so that we have a trajectory to follow. And also, it's adorable. So where we started in 2019, I also have a version of this presentation, which is a little bit more comprehensive. I tried to weed out some of, I'm long-winded and I write too much. Jim has a binder that can attest to that. But there is a version of this, I can share digitally with, that does go a little bit more into detail if you want to review anything, and I can share that at the end. Also, this, this right here links to a current webpage that you can find on, on the main Otter Valley webpage. So where we started, 2019, 2020, 2020, what a year. We started, I was three-quarter time. We had 92 students in the fall semester, 68 in the spring. We were offering wood shop and middle school tech ed. An annual budget of about $4,000. And we threw stuff at the wall and saw it stuck. There was a lot of, we tried a couple of different things, shook things up. My wood shop class was a little bit of wood shop, a little bit of construction. It seemed like there was some interest in both things. So later on, I'll talk about how we spun that off into a new program. So positives, obviously, you guys, community support. It's been great getting to know this community. Been meeting regularly with different people and starting an overall outreach process, which was obviously slowed a little bit, but, you know, we're picking it up back, picking it back up now. I've been trying to get meetings with some of the local contractors to see if there are natural things that we can collaborate on. Naylor Green McKernan, I reached out, but they are thankfully very busy right now. So that's an ongoing process. Last fall, I, not last fall, but fall 2019, I did hold a, essentially what would be an advisory meeting, and we had about, I believe there were 13 participants, everyone from associate general contractors to a local machinist that I do some work with, and various community members, making, strengthening our relationship with Brandon Rec in a new capacity, and so much more. And again, Jean and Jim, thank you so much. It's been, so far, it's been a blast, and I know it's going to continue to be that way. This space down here, the basement of Otter Valley, I think is one of the coolest places I can think of between what we do here and Moose right next door. And that's one of the other things, is this space, as it was utilized previously, still has capacity for growth. And, and I'll get to that in a second. The kids are excited. I think that this year alone, and also I even brought props, this is something that was 3D printed today. I have a student who's doing an extended learning opportunity. He's building a drone. He drew this in a CAD program today. This is the arm. I know I'm very tiny, and this is tinier, but he drew this today and we 3D printed it. And hopefully, within the next, well, he's graduating this year, so by graduation, this thing's going to fly, I hope. So that's, that's the kind of stuff that we're doing here. We're empowering kids to try new things, push the envelope, and explore where they're headed in their futures. And very much so, there are some things, and I'll talk about that in a second, but we have, there overall is a very decent base of high-quality tools that were available. However, that being said, there were some challenges as well. Some of that equipment is no longer industry, was no longer industry standard. We're actually very much now on track to have things meet that standard, meaning that things that you, if you walk into a shop at Naylor or Addison Residential or New England Woodcraft, things that we have in the shop, we're moving towards having the ability to have similar, a similar complement of tools that they would find there. So when students leave here, be it go for other educational opportunities as they exit high school or directly into the workforce, it's not going to be like, well, we've never seen this before. It's going to be, oh, I've used that. And now it's just natural continuation. We're working on updating our storage, things that kind of weren't, aren't necessarily in the best shape storage-wise, day-to-day supplies. Oh, come on. Well, I guess I don't have to sneeze. Day-to-day supplies were kind of iffy, and we didn't have a lot of heat measures. We had one, and stuff like that. So those, that's where we started two years ago. Where we are now, we continue that, we built on that positive student engagement. We built product, projects that students could be proud of early on, but also give them room to explore more. Began the upgrades last year with general maintenance, starting to price out things, planning. We purchased a lot of hand tools. A good chunk of the 2019-2020 budget went towards that, those hand tool purchases. I worked with Jim to develop a plan of action, and my goals centered around not only curriculum, but also action steps for actual, for implementation in the shop, which it ties everything together in a cohesive environment. Added courses to the catalog, which we offer this year, 2020, 2021. Developed new curriculum that is scalable and also flexible, which we had to be this year. We started an OV Maker Space Time, which I'm happy to say, well, I'll give you the statistics on that, but I'm happy to say that that was probably, that was one of many highlights from last year. And then, again, started making those relationships in the community. It was, as we all know, the shutdown with COVID was, it was so, it was, it was not a momentum killer, but it was just one of those like walls I felt like we ran into. We tried our best, and when kids walked back here in October, it was, I think that was October? Yeah, October. And then even this Monday, it has been, I can't tell you how excited I was on Monday. I know that there was a lot of nervousness to it, but we picked up and I, I was tired at the end of the day, even though it was only two days ago, but that was, that right there was one of the highlights of my year, and as was October, when kids actually started showing up again. Because it, that's what this place is about, that's, it's about that student learning. It's about that engagement and using these two things on a day in and day out. So back to those after-school opportunities. So we started the OV Maker Space Time, it was four hours a week, started the end of November. I missed a couple of the data tracking, a few days tracking data, but of the 17 data days that we were open between that and mid-March of last school year, we had 135 individual contacts. That could have been something short, 10, 15 minutes, but the majority of them were an hour to two hours. That was funded partially, well, it was funded, there was a funding structure that Kristen Hubert used some grant money. We were able to get a few supplies, which helped facilitate that. And there was 37 individual people, including students, staff, and one board member. Hi, Derek. Which was, was amazing. And that's one of the things with after-school programming that I really tried to do is, yes, it's about the kids primarily, but opening it up to students and staff. Obviously, staff will have, have to compensate it a little bit differently, but opening it up to people throughout the community allows for another learning opportunity to take place, not only between students, but between students and staff in a different scenario, which I think is really helpful. And I'm going to continue, hopefully, to do stuff that. It was myself and Carlo Romeo who facilitated that. The other thing we tried last year, and again, the shutdown did this, was I was working with Brooke Kimball over at North Campus, and students over there accessing special education services. We piloted a program called the Vermont Box Company. We cleaned up a shop space over there, purchased some new tools with Kristen's help through that grant funding. And the overall concept with that was essentially to create an entrepreneurial program that taught kids real-world skills between interfacing with the community and also building actual, an actual product to sell. And the idea was to create these gift boxes that we could then sell. Unfortunately, again, things didn't turn out as we hoped. And what we ended up doing was I did create some kits that they could finish at home. We didn't get to the, to the community interfacing part of that, but the kids did get a chance to build something. They were just about to really, I can't tell you the transformation over the, I think, two or three months that we worked on that. They went from being a little apprehensive to really wanting to engage with it and be, yeah, it was one of those opportunities that I was very thankful for, but also I'm hoping that we get a chance at some point again to revisit that. So that brings us to this year. Over the summer, I, I've been, as some of you, some or most of you are aware, I was adding a disendorsement to my license. So I've been taking numerous classes over the last year, and as part of one of those courses, it was coming up with vision statements for your program. And this is one of those things that trying to, again, create, brand is the wrong word, but a community based around an idea. And this is kind of the encapsulation of that idea, where this program delivers high-quality, industry-guided, relevant, engaging, and culturally-aware, that is proficiency-based STEM and pre-technical courses at Otter Valley. They're going to give these kids a chance to have exposure to things so they can make informed decisions about their future. And that's one of the other things that I really try to focus on, is you don't know unless you try. And the reality of the situation is, I remember, I was talking, actually, I was talking to some of my middle schoolers the other day about when I was in middle school. I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with a large animal vet. And I obviously did not become a large animal vet, but I know about that now because of that opportunity. This program, I'm hoping, is growing into giving those kids trying on different hats and seeing what fits, what's comfortable, and what they want to pursue, or possibly not pursue with their remaining years at Otter Valley and then beyond. And it's just creating a way for these students, for the students of Otter Valley to feel comfortable with who they are, but also really push themselves and also be a little bit uncomfortable while they're trying some new things and having that positive growth. So as I said, this is trying to encapsulate that in a way that we can have a common discussion about, but also so there is an explicit statement of what this program is trying to accomplish. And then those challenges I talked about, where we ended up. Vansaws repaired. That was one of the things that we had an issue with. We had had that fixed. I'm happy to also say it celebrated its 50th birthday, and I'm hoping for at least 20 more. We sold any old equipment, but we also made sure, by selling that equipment, we were able to reinvest any of the monies back into updating the shop. I'll let Brenda take over, not actually take over, but like, you know, I don't know any of the details of that beyond the checks went to central office, and that's awesome. We sold that old equipment, and most of that was safety-based or redundancy. So it wasn't like, eh, this one looks weird, let's get rid of it. It was making sure that we were meeting a high standard. We did purchase a new table saw that was one of the biggest, that is the biggest purchase we've made to date since I've been here. And the new table saw was purchased specifically so that we have a saw that has a fail-safe mechanism in it, so that in the unlikely and hopefully never occurring instance that a student's finger comes in contact with the blade, it will automatically shut down, thus saving them a lot of distress. We are, I'm currently working on building some new cabinetry, and we're updating our storage so it's safe, it's safer, not that it's unsafe now, but so that it is a high quality and reflects that industry standard we're trying to emulate. I'm currently able to use, access budgetary money through the purchasing card, which has, my, my purchase cycle is so strange, it might be three months between purchases or day over day over day where I am having to buy small things. And that has been a, a great opportunity to have access, so I appreciate that, and Brenda and Jim helping with, with all of that. And then again, most of the budget the last couple of years has been updates, some supplies, but mainly, mainly updates and making sure that this is the safest environment for our students. And there it is, there's the table saw. Actually, it is now attached to the air handling system, and we are very happy, proud of it, and it's going to be great to see what the kids can build with it. So this year, we offered woodworking, industrial technology, and steam, smiths, motors in history, and eighth-grade tech ed, which is a shorter course. So our woodworking, industrial tech, and steam courses are half-credit courses that, oops, no, I'm a slide ahead in my head. I think I'm out, right? Anyway. So those courses are half-credit courses, they meet every, this year they all meet every day for a quarter. Next year, with a return to an A-Day, E-Day format, they'll, they'll be every other day for a semester. And then our eighth-grade course is a short-format course that is focused on an introduction to technology education specifically. So we go over the history of technology, starting hundreds of thousands of years ago, and go through the modern day. And then we use that to have a discussion about design processes. And then kids, the students ultimately are introduced to a CAD program, and then 3D print part woodworking, tool safety, and making sure that students are thinking about applying what they, they learn in a more tilted, more towards a fine woodworking. Of course, we haven't had a lot of short shop time this year, but we still have made a bunch of, at least, cutting boards, which is our first project. And then industrial technology is specifically looking at the building trades and construction trades, and I'll talk about that in a second, steam, as well as steam, motorsmiths in history. So the tiny, we started building a tiny house as our focus project for industrial technology. As it stands right now, we have the wall panels, the floor structure, and a roof and loft structure in panelized form, ready to be assembled when this class is offered again next year. One of the communications I've had, and I'm looking forward to continuing that because we have a nail down if it's 100% going to happen, but I did talk to Tanner Romano at Naylor, and it sounds like they might be willing to bring a crane to help us set these panels and build this house. Ultimately, the goal is to possibly sell it or use it on campus. Obviously, there's some logistical things that would need to be worked out for that, but it's, it's a real project. The students are engaged. I have not been pushed as hard by kids, I think, in my entire career. These guys did not want to stop. In fact, I have a student who's still working on this. We have a donation coming from a community member, from a older camper, that will help us outfit this with cushions and a refrigerator and numerous other pieces. So it's repurposing, again, making connections in the community, but also, all that aside, the kids, I, as I said, it was fantastic. And this is what it, this isn't all of the kids, unfortunately, because I didn't get pictures of every student working on it, being every other day, but this is what we've been doing. So it's eight by 14, so not huge, but significant. And, and it was not only fun to work on them, work on it with them, but again, and I keep coming back to it, the student engagement. They, they pushed me, and it was great. The other class, which I co-talked with Kevin Thornton, was Steam Motorsmiths in History. It was a great opportunity, and actually, I've been leaving this up here because I, I like having it. It was, the history of the electric motor rooted in Brandon, Vermont, specifically Forestale. And it's just amazing for these kids to be able to actively see how history influences their modern-day world, and how a 220-year history, or 200-year history, is where, for some of them, is literally in the backyard where they went to elementary school. And this was a lot of fun, again, for the students and for us, because it was giving them a history lesson, but also giving them a way to actually engage with it physically. And they built, unfortunately, time did not cooperate, so we never fully got a working motor, but they did build motors that were very close. And I'm very proud of everything they accomplished, and it was, again, another thing, another way for them to engage with their education. It's a little bit different. That's, that gives them a chance to get outside of a box that they may feel like they, they might need to be in. And I think that we saw a kid shine that, in a lot of ways, sometimes struggled to. And it was, it was a pleasure working with every student in that class. So this just kind of gives us our breakdown of how each one of those classes has been received, I think. 61 students in woodworking this year, industrial technology, 30 students, motorsmiths in history, 16 students, and then eighth-grade technology over the eight sections, which is a four, it's essentially a four-and-a-half-week course, 88 students. That added up, one student out here, another student added, we're just about, just about 180 to 190 students, give or take, for the school year that will come through this program. So this is, again, this, you know how when you do a presentation and like, there are two slides, you're not quite sure, this should have gone earlier, so I apologize, but four courses offered, there they are, annual budget at $4,000, plus the super budgetary money for some of the improvements. Again, thank you for the help with that. The shop, one of the best things I have seen, people coming into the shop between maintenance, redoing the floor last year with an epoxy floor, with the new tools, students that haven't been down here, they're like, oh my God, this is amazing, and it looks really different. And also the students who have been here over the last two years, you can see them taking ownership of the space because of those changes, which has been fabulous as well. One other thing we did, so we did have several cutting boards that were not finished. I had a student that needed some additional credit to finish out his, his coursework with me, and he, as part of that, he finished 16 cutting boards. Some were just sand, some were, needed a little bit more tender-loving care, and we were able to sell those as a fundraiser, and we raised about $500 for the program, which was, which was fabulous. As we move forward, I'm making a list of things that we're going to continue to need to marshal budgetary funds. I've met with Rich and we're, and Jim, and we continue to monitor the status of equipment, taking into consider, not just replacing it because it's broken, or, or, so figuring out, again, using that industry standard as our guy, as our north star, what needs to be replaced, what's going to get the most benefit for the kids. For example, we have a 3D printer we purchased last year, which is going to be used over multiple courses between the middle school and the high school. Recently, we received a donation of a Cricket vinyl cutter. Already, we've offered an after-school program using that to make stickers and T, well, we didn't get, quite get to the T-shirts yet, but we will. And that's another way to engage with students. And again, all these things are trying to meet kids where they are, but also push them a little bit, but also maybe cultivate skills they have someplace else in a different environment. And then also trying to work with other teachers. I didn't put it in here, but as one of the, one of the offerings, because we did not get a lot of opportunity to do things as a school this year, Jim and Jeff supported us in having a rocket launch day where the seventh and eighth graders, we launched where the seventh and eighth graders, we watched, I think somewhere between 30 and 40 rockets, which was like the kids made them, we went out to the field, it was beautiful with how the weather was in March. And, oh, actually, no, that was early April, right before break. And it was one of those kids made and they had a lot of fun. And it was another, one of the first opportunities, really, really got to get together as a middle school to have, have not only something that was a little bit educational, but also a lot of fun. So these are just upcoming things, ongoing conversations, continuing updating dust extraction so that we're making sure that we're as healthy as we can down here. Some of the drill presses, the desks in the classroom are in need of some updating. We're going to be shifting kind of how things are, shelving and storage, and then just continuing general things. So we're in good shape. That, that's one of the things that I really want to stress. Now it's incremental improvements and stuff like this. Like as we offer more programming, looking at one of the, one of the upcoming courses I'm going to talk about in two or three years will be a potential to add a course where we specifically focus on creating drones. So additional 3D printers support that. If we do end up having a CAD CAM, which is computer aided design and computer aided manufacturing class, we'll need to supplement that with a CNC router at the very least. But that will be able to, again, be used across the woodworking program, that program, potential, potential other steam and after school programs. So this is just a list of things that, and the other thing is that, the, the other reason is, is I'm one person. We hear about grants on and off or opportunities. If you hear something, please let me know. We did apply for the Vermont Lottery's Innovate Educate Grant. Unfortunately, we didn't receive it. We'll apply again next year. It's, it's, it's all a process. Also, it's nice since I have a lot of the grant paperwork written now, so that some of the narratives will come easier. So 2021, 2022, we are working on offering additional courses. This, next year, we're going to stay pretty much the same schedule. But we're, we're looking towards potential additional things and also, just making sure I'm not completely out of time yet. But looking towards additional courses you can offer, after school programming specifically. And then also the following year where we're working on completing a more comprehensive course catalog. I have a multi-year plan with, with, that will rotate different courses through giving students an opportunity to pursue their passions, things they're interested in, again, or try things on that they're not quite sure about. And that's everything from additional steam classes to more industrial related classes. Some of that will definitely require a grant writing effort on my part, but we will get there. But so 2021, 2022, originally, we're going to offer a, a small engines course. But that, we're going to wait a little bit on that. That being said, I am going to try to get a small cohort of students together. As part of that, we are doing, going to be applying for a grant to the National FFA Association and offering chapter, activities that are associated with that, which will allow us to bring students to state level competitions. As I said, this is a slow rollout of opportunities for that. What that is going to focus on are power mechanics and eventually welding to give students an opportunity to explore that career path. Maker Space, I'm hoping that we'll be able to, you know, fingers crossed and the guidelines are happy. Maker Space Time, we have discussed and are working towards offering adult education classes, which will not all be taught by me because I will be living here if I do. I did tell someone the other day, if you're carrying a cot down to the shop, it's about time for someone to stop me. So we're going to be partnering with Brandon Rec to offer. There's still some things to work out, so I hope Brenda and Jim don't get mad at me for that. But we're, we're working on partnering with Brandon Rec to offer some community opportunities. And then welding and CNC is something, as I said, down the road a little bit, which will require grant funding. But they're on the target, they're on the table because they are both high growth, high wage positions that are in demand, not only in Vermont, but throughout the country. And giving students an opportunity to explore those. So we have basically a multi-prom approach of, you know, trade oriented in terms of welding, woodworking, construction. And then their counterpart in engineering and mathematics and science with the steam courses. It allows for a really positive ecosystem that also allows for a lot of crossover. This is just an overview of the small engines course. And actually, after I'm done here, we did get a donation of a small engine, which I have to extract from where it was hidden outside. Oh, sorry. I didn't, I don't, I don't know how to do the seat hands. Should I, should I stop?
Actually, no. I think you, you should plan on wrapping up. So we have a couple of minutes for questions, but we started early. So I think if you stop and take questions, I'm worried we won't come to an end here.
All right, we're, oh, I'm hitting the wrong button. I'm sorry. So it's just future courses, as I said, wrapping those up. We are also going to be working on a garden space out, outside. And then some other stuff, as I said, with working with Brandon Rec. And then again, the only ask I have is continue spreading the good word of all the great things, as Jim was saying, that we're doing here. I know you guys are all advocates for it and I really appreciate it. And if you see grants, ideas, please email me. Let me know. And, and those of you I haven't met on an individual basis, I would love to. It, it's, you, you are part of this community and you are, you're, you're all amazing, so I appreciate that. And then the other thing is, any ideas, I'd love to have another fundraiser with, with, with the, with the Otter Valley tech ed stuff at some point, if you guys want to do that. So that, thank you. I appreciate it. I hope that was informative. I, I love being here. This is, this has been, been great so far and I'm really looking forward to the future.
Thank you, Devin. We love your energy. And that's a great overview. And for the board, it's, it's like an interim presentation on, on the ends policy. Lori, do you want to facilitate the hands up?
I'm sure, or you can. It's fine, whatever.
Okay, Bill?
You're muted.
You're muted, Bill.
I'm going to ask Devin if he would press the stop share screen so we could see each other.
I found that button.
There you go.
Okay. I enjoyed the presentation a great deal and I also appreciate your energy and how you're taking to this. My first question though is, and they're two short ones, is for Jenny and Jim is I'd like to see the connection between Glenn's brought out. If you two could explain that a little bit more, that would help me a great deal. And for Devin, I have the great honor of knowing a great deal about superhetridine vacuum tube radios. If there is ever a piece of knowledge that is absolutely worthless, that's it. But what that reflects is the tremendously rapid change that we're facing. How are you teaching and dealing with students in this ever changing world? I guess we can start with Jenny and Jim.
I didn't, I didn't hear your question, Bill. You got it, Jean?
Yeah, so I just put up the ends policy for you, Bill. And really, it connects particularly in the disposition for lifelong learners and successful and contributing citizens, because the skills that students learn in tech ed are transferable skills that they're going to carry with them throughout life. In addition, under the academic proficiency, technology is specifically mentioned along with several other skills that kids get in the technology classes. As you would know, math, science, social sciences come along with it. So it fits there as well. But in particular, the ability to take technology classes allows kids to pursue a personal passion, learn the skills to pursue that passion into life. And, and we're just, we're really proud of that. So I thought it would help if you saw the policy itself.
Yeah. And I'd like to spend more time on that. We can't deny that whole transferable skills is the entire key.
And then to the, to the vacuum tube. So actually, I might need to talk to you because my father was an electrical engineer and I have a bunch of vacuum tube stuff, I believe, still kicking around my house. He's also a ham radio operator. But anyway, to the rapidly changing nature. Here's the thing. I'm a blacksmith. I'm a welder. I almost was a doctor. I talk about things that the best way I have ever seen to explain the ideal gas law, which is why, essentially explains why your grill cylinder ices over as it burns propane. All of those things can be taught in this room, this shop. That being said, the fundamental, and going back to what Jean said with transferable skills, is that we are going to try to always be industry relevant. But the way of thinking, design thinking, and making sure that you're able to connect your hands and your head, no matter how complicated it gets, like I'm not teaching hand drafting anymore because part of it's, it's a, it's an art and it's a science or, or math. Maths, as, as some say. But I am using a CAD program which still teaches the fundamentals that you would get by drafting on a board in a, in an allowable time, given all the constraints, given all the pressures on our students' times, timing these days. I'm also, for example, this fall, as my own professional development, I've identified a class I'm potentially going to take on, on robotics. So that's my continued learning. But I never, like, I always approach things with respect the past, understand it, and look to the future. So it's that looking towards, you know, 3D printing, this thing, I can get a wax based polymer that can be used to create relief, plaster relief casting. So I can use modern technology and meld it with older, older methods and, and move the students ahead.
Devin, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there because we only have about three minutes left. Action, and I know your passion. You could talk to us all night. So Mike Lufkin, you have your hand up next.
Yeah, I, I just had a question. I don't know if it's more for you, Brenda, or even Eugene in regards to the 3D printers. I know, um, how many do you think we would need? That's one of the things that jumped out to me. And I know some of the schools already have some. And could those be reallocated based on need and so forth?
Well, let's see, the first part of the question, how many would we need? I don't know. The school, a couple of the schools have them. Lothr have got the first. I'm not even sure, Brenda, if you know what other schools have.
I know Neshibi has one. It's in the library.
It could be reallocated based on need, certainly. That's right. I remembered Neshibi's. But, I mean, of course, you know, it's all Otter Valley material, district material. I, I don't know exactly how many we would need.
I mean, I don't know whoever saw on the news how they're now making houses with 3D printers.
It's amazing.
That's pretty cool how, I mean, it says it takes less than a day and the whole house goes up.
Okay, Kevin?
Thanks. I just wanted to say that what, what Devin is doing down in that basement is incredible. And I witnessed it. And the way, the value in this type of education for getting kids engaged is priceless. Unfortunately, I think we live in an age where we're not going to get kids to read Jane Austen, no matter how hard we try. The phone has really changed things from previous generations that way. Anything that gets them engaged, gets them using their hands, that gets them thinking independently, that gets them experimenting, is golden. And that's what Devin's doing. That's what this is all about. And I would urge the board, he was very modest about saying what he wanted from us, but I think we need to consider funding for these, some of these technologies as we, as we look at future budgets. Thanks.
Thank you. So I think the, the board agenda is out of time, but are there any last comments or questions? And Devin, I really want to thank you and Jim both for being here tonight and for providing the information.
Well, thank you for having me. I, I very much, as I said, this is, this has been amazing to work with, with everyone, everyone who I've worked with so far and I'm looking forward to working with even more. And your kids are great, those of you who I've, I've worked with. If I haven't met them yet, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you. So I'll take my leave now. Have a wonderful evening. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Otter Valley is lucky to have Devin on the faculty.
Thank you, Devin, as well.
There it is. Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
I got, I got this.
Okay, so we're going to move back to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone wants to pull off? I know I wanted to pull off the review. And Jean, you wanted to pull off personnel, correct?
I just simply want to add, I guess we have to pull it off. The review, the draft audit just came in, so we'd like to postpone the audit review till next month because we just got the draft from the auditors. And I need to walk on a teacher to personnel changes, so if you want to pull that off, that's fine.
All right. Okay, so all of those that, can I get someone to make a motion for the consent agenda that does not include D or E?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Thank you. All of those that approve the consent agenda, please signify by eye or green button or waving at me somehow. Great. Thank you. Consent agenda passes. Okay, so if I could get a motion for the personnel changes, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Angela and, so Jean, did you want to discuss the teacher?
Yes, just today. That's why it's, she's not written on there. I offered the Otter Creek Academy PE position to Christine Landon, who has about, I'm trying to remember now, seven years of PE experience plus many other related experiences. And so I'd like to walk her on tonight as well.
While we're talking about that, could you also explain James Calv and, and what the RNESU data literacy coaches?
Sure. So James Calv was a, is currently in this current school year, a teacher at the high school. Under the new Esser grants and, which really needs to focus on student recovery of any learning loss, we recognize what came out of our needs assessment with our committee is that we need a data literacy coach, both somebody who can manipulate the data and then build capacity within the district with teachers and administrators to use the data so that we know that we're really targeting our interventions in the right place and they're being successful. So we're, we've offered that position to James Calv. It'll be federally funded. Well, if it's federally funded, it doesn't belong as you. So he's exiting on your agenda and he'll go on the RNESU agenda for hire.
Okay, okay. Any other questions regarding personnel?
Charlie?
James. His first name is James.
No, no, Christine or Chris.
Christine Landon, L-A-M-D-O-N.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with the last name. It's the first name. Sometimes it's a C, sometimes it's a K.
CH.
It's a what? I'm sorry.
CH.
CH, Kristen.
Christine, CH.
Thank you.
We'll get through it. Okay. All those that approve the personnel change? All those that approve the personnel changes, please signify by saying aye or waving at me somehow.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Personal changes passes. Thank you for that. Uh, we're going to move, and we're postponing on the audit review, so we are moving into our monitoring report 2.6 asset protection. Last month you saw that um as Jean's um
Interpretations?
Thank you, interpretations. And so tonight she has provided you with her um oh my goodness.
Evidence.
That's another word, evidence. Um, she's provided you with the evidence, so.
Really good at that close technique when I was a kid, where they leave a word out every, you know, so I, I'm good, I can fill your in.
Well, that's good, because apparently I need to help with that.
Brenda's here with us as well to help answer any questions.
So at this point, um, can we get a motion to accept it and then we can talk about it?
I'll move to accept it.
Okay. Bill, are you seconding?
Angela just did.
Angela just did. Okay, thank you. Okay, so um, what'd you guys think? Any questions for Jean or Brenda?
Yes. I have a uh, is this, I can see that as pages thirteen through twenty-four of the supplemental materials. And I was struck by the impressive amount of work that was there, but at the same time, found myself wondering, how much time did this cost you to, to really put together? It looks rather large.
Oh, the, the monitoring report? To pull it together or the data security piece? What, what, put what together?
Well, I'm trying to figure out. When I look at the supplemental document, it's pages thirteen through twenty-four.
Right, right. It's quite lengthy, yep.
I'm impressed, but also amazed and worried about you folks in the sense that that took a lot of work to put together. And I'm just hoping it served a value for yourselves in particular for putting it all together.
It's a really good question, Bill. Um, Brenda and I did this together because most of this falls under Brenda. Alexis was also a part of it because the technology assets fall under her. So we do it as a team approach. And, you know, it is the evidence for the board of whether or not we're meeting the policy that you set, as opposed to I just said so. Um, is it worth it? The first time you go through it, it takes a lot of time, but after that, each year, you're kind of updating it. And what does make it worth it, I think, is sometimes I will catch something that we're not doing. That happened a couple of years ago with how, under the confidentiality policy and how we did not have a consistent district-wide way of managing records. So if I weren't doing a monitoring report, I don't think I ever would have realized it until there was a problem. But I was able to catch it, there was no problem, and we could fix it. When we redo it annually, it's kind of like an annual review of our processes. Are they, is this still what we're doing? So only the first time through this is very lengthy, and then it's like a, an annual review. You'll get an annual review of it with any updates. I think it's worthwhile because it keeps everything current. But I appreciate your concern for how long it took to write this first one. And also, when, when all three boards went to policy governance, there are some policies that have to be written differently for each board. This is not one. This is an SU-wide approach to asset protection. So we could write one response. And if there is something different, for example, the Barstow facility form versus the Otter Valley facility form, it's easy to refer to that without writing a whole new report.
If I can add a little bit of something, I think Jean is forgetting that uh we work together on this exclusively for about three hours. Then we each work independently for three to four hours, and then we revisited it for another couple of hours. So it is a wonderful way for us to really dive into what we believe or understand or interpret your policy as, and then to really think about what evidence supports that. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, I had the pleasure of attending a policy governance conference with Rebecca and Barb. And what I really learned was we spent time kind of burying you in data versus burying you in evidence or providing evidence. So we've really, I think, worked hard to do with meaningful evidence and not just dump paperwork on you about everything we're doing. So I, I hope you find it to be um, you know, supportive of both our interpretation and, and proof of our compliance. But I agree with Jean, it's, it's, I, I'm a, an advocate for policy governance because I think it is a really good way for you. It's, it's almost like a selfie val in a, in a job description and in a staff performance. You've told us to do this, and now you're asking us to say, what do you think I'm telling you to do and prove to me you're doing it? Or tell me you're not doing it and what your plan is going to be to do it. So um, I think it's well worth the time, and like I said, Jean and I both oftentimes see things and go, hmm, never thought of that before. So thank you, Bill.
Did you find holes?
Uh, this particular time, I don't think we found holes, but we have in previous times. I don't remember finding a hole. Do you think so, Brenda? What we did find is when we were applying the evidence, some of our interpretation needed to be kind of more clear.
Fine.
Yeah, refined.
Yeah, no, we didn't find any holes this time.
Well, it seems like it'd be a good tool for finding discrepancies. I'll be quiet after this.
Yeah, there would be. Um, Mike?
Yeah, I have a question in regards to number 10, um, where it says, uh, where is it? Where um we hire investment advisors to look at the long-term assets such as the Barst- the, the Barstow Fund, the ELE fund, and the Burtet Funds. Um, do we, how do we follow that? Are, are we holding them accountable in any ways to see if they're following the investment policy statement? So if a bond falls below investment grade, how do we know that they're getting out of the bond or are we, are we tracking that anyway?
Uh, through the annual reports we get from them. Brenda, do you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, um, well, so let me clarify something that I, I haven't reread the report. I've got it open right now. So the Burtet Fund is kind of a carve-out that's a little bit separate because um while it's our asset, it is in the ownership and control of the town of Pittsburgh. And the Pittsburgh trustees are responsible for that investment management and strategy. So um, you know, that's a, a significant asset that we don't have that responsibility for, so we don't provide that, obviously. The other two, the ELE Fund and the Barstow, which you don't care about. So the ELE Fund, as you know, Mike, we um probably about, maybe as much as eight years ago now, actually did a search and RFP process for investment advisors, and we do ask them to give us a report annually. They would have been scheduled typically um last year to give a report to um the board. It did not happen with 2020 because of uh COVID. But they usually do, I think the last time they prepare, it's like a bi-annual report. And last time they prepare and come in and meet with us and, and explain how they are meeting the um investment policy and the um status of the fund, just a general of the fund.
So, so then they are, they're coming and meeting with us once a year, you're saying then?
No, we, we did it every other year. Normally have hit last year. I should schedule one for this year. Haven't done that yet.
Other questions for um Jean or Brenda regarding 2.6? Okay, not hearing anything. So all of those that accept their report, uh, please signify by um using your tools in front of you. Wave at me, green button. Okay, thank you. We have a monitoring report. Alright, so we are moving into governance process. We are looking at um our uh policy governance policies for action, which is our, these are our second readings. And so they're up for adoption. The first one is policy 2.3, financial condition and activities. Um, point, so 2.3.11 is revision. Um, and then there were also changes to policy 2.3 based on the monitoring report recommendations. So in your packet, you would see the changes in red. Um, I do need someone to make a motion um so that we can talk about this. Please. Thank you, Angela. Second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Great. Um, does it, we've read these ones already. Um, does anyone have anything that they want to add or something that doesn't make sense? Um, Jean, do you want to add anything regarding this policy?
I'll just open up the changes for 2.3.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, they're both kind of together. Uh, 2.3.11, and then you added 12, I recommended you add 12, 13, 14, and 15. And you're in your second reading, like you said.
So if no one has anything for discussion, um, all of those in favor of um their revisions as noted, please signify by saying aye. Press your green button or wave at me. I prefer the green button at this point because I can't see everybody. That's a moment. There we go. Or, yeah, I see you, Barbara. Okay, great. Okay. Policy 2.3 and its revisions have passed. Thank you. Yeah.
Seconded it. I, I can't type in, look at the people at the same.
Angela made the motion. Derek seconded it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, next policy is policy 4.3.2, which is one of our policies, which is agenda planning. You will again see our um changes in red. Maybe. All right, there we go. Okay. So essentially it's um 4.3.2, which talks, we realized when we were doing our assessment of this policy, that um we weren't actually doing it the way it was rated and written. So we rewrote it to uh, do it the way that we actually do it. As far as um, when we provide, when I provide a report to the board, which is during the annual report, um, we recreate our annual work plan at the August retreat and um, that's about it. So someone want to make a motion? Or did we already do that?
Nope.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'm on.
Thank you. That was Angela's second.
Second.
Derek again, okay. Anybody want to talk about it? You okay with the changes as they're written? Okay, all those that approved, um, please signify by saying aye. Press your green button or wave at me. Thanks, Barbara. Okay. Awesome. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to summer facilities report project requests. So this was one of our um supplementary handouts. We should probably get a motion on the table, um, and then we can let Brenda talk about them.
I'm on.
Okay, can I get a second from someone? If we don't get a second, we don't do any projects. Ah, there we go. Thanks, Derek. Alright, so um Brenda, do you want to go through these or do you want to just ask questions? I have questions, but uh maybe you want to do a little.
I'll go, I'll give you a quick little update. So as you know, um, we presented some preliminary information and we're going to be revisiting facilities next week, not next week, but next meeting. Um, this has been updated since that time. So since that time, as I think you heard Steve say, you know, the processes, we kind of start thinking about this in November. We fine-tune what can be in the general fund for the budget, what can be in the facility fund. Kind of make those decisions through December. Early January, we're re, kind of putting everything down on paper, prioritizing in February, and we get to this point where we're really saying, okay, now reality comes. This is how much time we have in the summer, which is uh important because we uh probably, like you, tend to overestimate that when we have a 40-hour vacation, we can get more done in 40 hours than normal. Um, and we tend to think we can get more done than is realistic over our nine, 10-week summer, so we look at time. But then we also looked at resources, and so we pared it down to a lot of things that we think are really essential and necessary this time this year. Um, and uh I won't go through it line by line, but it is kind of highlighted for facilities um by, by building. And we did pare it down to about 242,000 or 245, just for round numbers. Jean, if you could scroll down a little bit. I anticipated you might be asking me, well, what would that do to the fund? How much is in it? How much have we already committed? Where is that at? And so that's what this little reconciliation is, is it's letting you know um where the, uh, at the beginning of this year, because that's the audited time, at the beginning of this year, we still had some uh dedicated Otter Valley Union High School funds. Um, and then we had uh only the OVU fund for everyone. And we do still have $8,000 dedicated for Goshen. So those were monies that came into the merger with us. Um, the Otter Valley Union High School funds have since been spent. We have all seen and looked at um the beauty of the front entryway and the auditorium. And more funds have been spat from the OVU uh overall pot. So when you start with the 2.6 million and you recognize the amount that um has been committed through the minutes, and I tried to tell you which minutes and which day, and it looks like I'm missing something on that 650, but that was the front entrance project, so I apologize that the the wrapping of the report kind of cut it off. Then the auditorium seats and then the elementary projects that you approved last year for la, for the summertime. So you've committed um of the 2.6 already 829,000, and that was really for last year, last summer's work. Um, you'll recall in December, when we found out my uh error in transferring the reserve or the surplus of fiscal year 20, that we wanted to um spread it out over three years. And then to do that, we um uh transferred two years worth of that surplus into this fund. And we left one year in the general fund to be applied to fiscal year 22, our next year's budget. So that next line, that 920 is the 460 or the two-thirds that would be used. Um, and we will uh apply to our 23 and 24 budgets. So before considering these requests of about $245,000, you have about $890,000 in the fund. Um, that is also before looking at any uh current year surpluses that we may have, and we are expecting some. We've been very um conscientious and judicial in recognizing our added costs associated with COVID-19 and applying them to grants and, and working really hard at maximizing those. So we do hope and anticipate that that will grow. We've had preliminary meetings with each of the principals. Um, and for the June meeting, we'll have an estimate of where we expect to end the year. We haven't been able to, I haven't been able to pull all those notes together yet.
So Brenda, um, we're asking for uh approval to spend out of the reserve fund, the $249,000, which will leave approximately 550,000 left in the reserve fund.
Before any of this year additions, yes.
Or any surplus might be put in from this year.
Yes. Which you will make a decision on in June.
But we are asking uh for permission to spend that reserve money. There's.
Um, Angela?
And uh, so this facility
And so this facility fund is facility plus technology, correct? We, we add that, we added that stipulation in, correct? A few years ago.
You mean, you went to the voters and added that?
Yeah.
I, why can't I even see you all of a sudden? Oh, because you're the dog in the corner. Okay. Thank you, Angela. You know.
That was a few years ago, we added tech.
We did that for Otter Valley. We did that for Otter Valley Union High School. I do not think we did that for OVU.
No.
Well, I guess my question is back to the, you know, the presentation that we had today, and Kevin's very good point of maybe needing to give a little more money to the tech ed side because it's been lacking for so long. Can we put that into equipment and make it a facilities? Uh, line?
So I.
It's for equipment.
I would like to respectfully tell you that if you brought in every teacher, they would be.
I know they, I know they would.
Exactly why they should have and need more investments into their program. And I'm not saying that he doesn't. I'm saying that through the budget building process, the principals do meet with each of the departments and each of the teachers in preparing our budget, including our technology investments. So at this point, I wouldn't recommend circumventing that work and kind of putting that funded, you know, putting an unspecified amount in for, you know, an unspecified project, but.
Well, the point I just wanted to make is that, like with the rest of the faculty, it's not, there's no way to like kind of skirt tail books and stuff into this budget or this, you know, this area.
Can it, is it even possible?
Yes, is it even possible to be able to?
Yeah, your memory is great. And I appreciate your longevity, but it was, I know what you are remembering. And we did go to the voters and we did add technology to the Otter Valley Union High School fund.
So to do that, we'd have to go back to the voters next March if you wanted to add it to Ovu. So Angela, you might think about.
But would we, I mean, we bought a tractor.
Right, it's not, it's equipment. It's not technology.
Okay.
I would want to look at the way the initial warning was, was written. I don't remember if it said facilities and grounds, and that's why the tractor came under it. I, I would want to look at that.
Okay, Kevin?
Thanks, I just want to add a little response to, I mean, about every teacher wanting more, which I think is probably true. But I think tech ed really is a special case, and for two reasons. First is that it had been neglected for a long time. And I think some of that came through in Devin's talk. He did not have enough measuring tape. He's seventh grader, so how to measure things when he started. And much of the equipment is 50 years old or, or older. The other reason is that technology, as we all know, has moved so fast. And there's so many exciting things these kids can do, you know, with a CNC router, or a laser cutter, or maybe printers, that sort of thing. Things are expensive, but they're incredibly valuable when it comes to educating kids for the 21st century. So we just need to be aware of that. And that's really all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, so now it's my turn. I have specific questions in regards to where you stand or next to be. The cafeteria tables and the basketball hoops and the paving part, can you say over two years and over five years? So is that 15,000 for the paving, let's say, over five years? Or is that 15,000 a year for five years?
It is the, that number a year for the number of years specified.
But we're only approving the first.
She didn't have her new nap, but she's been happy. She's walked so much.
I, I'm sorry. I've got to look at this. So yeah, so like the tables, that is, is it 12,000 for two years? I moved forward, so I lost it. Oh, thank you, Jean. So that would be for this year, and then again next year. And it allows us to.
We're only asking for your purchase this year, but notifying you that it's, we're going to be coming back.
Right, and the paving at Otter Valley, at Nashaby is, there's a lot of paving. So it would be, that would be a over five years, section by section.
I'm also questioning the library windows. I thought we replaced all the windows at Otter Valley. Is it all the windows except for the library windows?
Yes, we replaced all of the original, and where's my friend Angela gone? All of the original facility windows. The library was a later addition, and those were not replaced.
Yeah, library windows are still old.
But I don't think that the library has that, these windows must be like gold, though, for 75,000 for, I don't know how many windows that is.
Well, you have that, all those windows on the south side, called the whole length.
Right.
And then you've got one on the west side, and then a couple on the north side. So I probably would say the ones on the south side are very expensive.
Okay.
It is a preliminary number. It, it is over the $15,000. So as you just learned in the monitoring report, it will be bid out. We'd be providing specs and, and putting it out for bid. And in it, we have some estimates of, once you get in, because we know there's some, some leaking in those, that we might also have some repairs to, you know, it's not just popping in and out of new windows. There might be actually some repairs associated with the frames.
And, um, okay. So I guess you don't understand what Lothar Blinds off-gassing means for $7,000.
So that means that as they use the blinds, they are releasing a very pungent and uncomfortable odor. So they have deteriorated to the point of off-gassing. These are the things I get to learn with the facility.
I just wanted to understand what that was as well, so.
Yes. It's a good question. It's a good learning opportunity.
Are we really putting carpet back in the brick building? I mean, I realize I'm probably getting into the weeds a little bit, but I. Or are you just replacing the carpet with, with the VCT stuff?
We, right, yes.
Okay.
Anytime we have carpeting, it's going to be an area rug so that it can be cleaned, removed, and replaced. So no, it would not be replacing with wall-to-wall.
And the well work, since it's unknown, you'd have to come back to us to talk to us about that, correct?
Well, that is the ongoing project that we are working on right now for the PFA, PFAs. And we are also looking for both emergency construction aid from the Agency of Education. And there is another grant from Rural Water Development that we're hoping to gain access to. So right now, we don't really have a choice. So right now, we're capturing the cost. They are somewhere around $9,000 so far. And, you know, like I said, we're hoping to be able to find resources to offset those. But when we know what that is, we will have to certainly come back.
All right, well, I just wanted to make sure that if we were approving this, we're only approving up to 7,500 for Lester. And so that would not be approved blindly because there's no number on there.
Yes, and this is a little bit of a chicken and an egg because I do recognize and respect that we haven't finished the conversation about the facilities. And because that is a study, if you wanted to wait until after next meeting to make that decision, that would be certainly acceptable. But what we believe is the needs of Lester are expansive enough that it needs more than somebody with facility knowledge, somebody with edu, which would be Steve, somebody with education knowledge, which would be Tom, and somebody with the finance knowledge, which would be me. But it needs somebody who understands engineering, understands architecture, understands permitting. And that's why we want a holistic look at that building. And that's where the study, the architectural study comes in.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions for Brenda at this point regarding facility upgrades? Thank you, Brenda, for answering my questions.
My pleasure.
Okay, so if you're ready to vote, all of those that approve the facility requests as stated, please signify by aye, green button, or waving at me, please. Okay, thank you. So our facilities upgrades requests have been approved. Uh, let's see, board monitoring report 4.1, where are we in time here?
I know you postponed it before. That is.
I know, I, we, I think we have to do it, honestly. I just need to find it in my stuff. I didn't print it off beforehand. So, um, while I'm looking for that, can we move on to the request to revisit the April 7, 2021 minutes, please?
Oh, you want, yeah.
Sure. Let me, what's up? Thank you. I want to preface this.
Kevin, before we start, we need a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion to revise the April 7 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay.
So Lori, if you'll indulge me for a minute in something that may not first sound relevant. There is a point to this, and I'll make it, I'll make it brief. I've got my copy of Martin Luther King's Why We Can't Wait here. And in the second of his Ten Commandments for the Birmingham Movement, he says this.
Can we talk about the minutes, Kevin, because I, I understand you want to, we're running late.
Honestly, Lori, this is not going to take more than about 45 seconds. It says, remember always that the nonviolent movement in Birmingham seeks justice and reconciliation, not victory. And I want to say before we start, you know, there's going to be some, I've got strong opinions about this, but I want to say to everyone here, including Claire, that I consider you my neighbor. And that the greatest thing about Brandon is, in, in our district in general is its sense of community. And I'm willing, you need never be afraid to speak to me in the grocery store, or on the street, or at a community event. And I'd welcome that about anything, about weather, about how the Otters are playing, or about these sorts of issues. So to go on, I want to amend the minutes from the 7th. I wasn't able to do that last time because of a technology problem. And after, on page eight, after the Ali Breier comment that ends with words deeply problematic, I want to add this. Laura Stoney interrupted Dr. Thornton without being recognized by the chair. The Stoney screamed that Dr. Thornton was a personification of white privilege and that white males had no right to speak on these matters, but must confine themselves to listening. Mrs. Stoney indicated that she expected to be kicked out of the meeting for this outburst, but that she didn't care. Now, I don't have too much to add about that. You're all there. You all witnessed it. So that's my comment tonight. Thanks.
Board members? What do you think? What's your pleasure? I, um, I'm not sure how, why that's important, Kevin, to be completely honest, because anybody can watch the video and see the way that it played out. So having it read in the minutes differently, I'm not sure the, the reason.
Well, I can explain that to you. We had a story in the reporter this week, where the, the cars didn't watch the tape. She worked from the minutes, and then she spoke to someone who wasn't very happy with me and never called me. So we got, I think what I would call considered a distorted story in the paper. It's really important to have records and, I mean, it seems like what you're saying is hard to say, why do we have minutes at all? My response is as long as we do have minutes, it's important that they be accurate.
Barbara?
Thanks, Lori. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I have something I'd like to read. I cannot adequately express how much I admire and value the expertise and excellence Charlene Bryant has shown in her years as recording secretary for this board and countless others. She is the epitome of professionalism in her recording and representation of public meetings. I realized on several occasions that if she is absent from a meeting and I am expected to produce the minutes, I will require at least two people assisting me to get names, details, meanings, et cetera, clear and concise. I consider her, and I trust I am not alone in this belief, I consider her an expert at what she does. Aside from occasional correction of names and similar small details, her minutes need no reworking or rewording. I wish to commend Charlene Bryant for keeping her recording stable, even, fair, and objective. She betrays no bias. She highlights no individual weaknesses. She humiliates no one. I have attended many meetings in my time on this board where tempers have flared, emotions have risen, and interruptions have occurred. These colorful, yet incidental details are not pertinent to the recorded minutes and are excluded. I respectfully recommend that we take no action and allow the minutes of the April 7th board meeting to stand as approved at the April 21st meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry?
Yeah, Lori, I just think almost as a point of order. We use Zoom because it's a tool that allows us to continue to meet during a pandemic. But I really think that we need to stay true to our protocols and our practices as a board, as though we were meeting in person as we have these Zoom sessions. And what I'm feeling is that if the, if the comments weren't recognized by the board, by the chair, excuse me, they really don't belong in the minutes. If we were in a, if we were in a face-to-face meeting, a lot of these comments that appear in Zoom sessions that aren't recognized by the chair wouldn't happen. To the point where I don't even believe that the chat comments that wind up in the minutes are appropriate to be in the minutes. They aren't people that were recognized by the board, by the chair, to speak. In fact, they haven't even spoken. Those are not spoken words from a board meeting. I didn't hear them. I didn't get an opportunity to speak on them. They really don't belong in the minutes. So with respect to the minutes, I really feel as though this particular question that Kevin has, if they weren't recognized, it wasn't a recognized speaker by the chair, they don't belong in the minutes. And as far as the chat comments go, I don't know, Lori, what's appropriate. Maybe at a later point, I'll make a motion to it, but I really feel as though those are inappropriate to be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, we'll take that up. I appreciate your point. We'll take that up in a minute. Angela? Angela, you're muted, honey.
I just wanted to take a second. I was going to say something, but Barbara very well covered everything that I was going to say. So I want to second what Barbara said. And I want to second what Barry said about getting chat messages out of the minutes because, but I agree, they, they're not pertinent to the meeting for the most part. And if they are, we will read them.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Yes. I think his request is relatively small. Add a paragraph to the minutes. And then to counter, Eric, what happens in the chat does not belong in the minutes. Well, several links were shared during that meeting in the chat, which were then recorded into the minutes. So what are we handpicking? What do we put into the minutes? Is my question. I want to be fair, you know, I'm all about fairness. I don't think he's asking anything very large, and I will not disparage Charlene whatsoever. I know she does a phenomenal job, and it's a tough job to do, isn't it? Taking this point, that point, that name, that name. I have no idea how she does it. But parts from the chat were taken directly and put into the minutes. So, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? It's kind of a scale. What do you put in, what do you put out?
Jean, you go first.
Laura, may I, can I respond to that, Laura?
Barry, before you go, I'm going to let Jean talk, because she hasn't had to speak first.
I'm just going to speak to the chat, the chat comments, um which is that what I what I think needs to happen is um. If if something goes in the chat, this is a, this is a meeting of public record, and if it goes in the chat, it needs to go in the minutes. So the best thing to happen actually is to turn off the chat and to stop to stop allowing the chat from occurring so that you remain a totally transparent public board meeting.
Uh okay, uh Bill, you have a question? Bill, you need to unmute.
Face-to-face does have lots more advantages, but it doesn't completely resolve the problem, because I can remember when a board chair about it, another member out to the parking lot. Um so I think it takes more than just simply where the meeting is. Charlene, the compliments go to you. Uh I certainly agree with them completely. And um I think my con- concern, and if this could be a friendly amendment, I would propose it, is the word screamed, which is in Kevin's remarks there. That requires interpretation of emotion to say it's a scream versus something else. If we could use more neutral language there, that would be better. And uh I'll have some suggestions for modification of the policies later.
Oh, you have a suggestion for language?
State it, expressed.
Okay. So um do you want to make that friendly amendment? Or is that the will of the board? I.
You mean the will of Kevin, because it's his motion.
True.
Sure, let's change it to express, that's fine.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Did anybody ever second it?
Oh, well.
Well, the person who gave the second should agree with that friendly amendment.
True.
So that's Eric.
Be Eric. Do you agree with that, Eric?
Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment mean add in the minute, his paragraph to the minute?
No.
Meaning changing.
Just right.
No, meaning changing the wording from screaming to express. So it's.
That's fine with me. I think that's fine.
Okay.
It's all, that's all interpretation, you know?
All right. Um is there any other discussion at this point? Barry, you had had your hand up. Are you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, and Barbara?
Yeah.
I just want to voice my concern if we're setting a precedent here. Doing this, there are other minutes that we will then need to go back and reconsider for precisely the same reasons, and I think that is a can of worms I don't want to open up.
Okay. All right, so does everybody, has everybody had a chance to speak? And at this point, we can vote. This time, I want you to be very clear as to what your um answer is. I would need you to use your green or red button. So if you agree with changing the minutes, please use your green button. If you're against it, please use your red button. I'm waiting on Mike. I'm waiting on.
Lori, Lori, I'm on an iPad and I don't know where to find the, oh, wait a minute, I found it, never mind. Sorry.
Derek, I need your.
Wait.
And Barry, I didn't see yours.
Oh, Lord.
Or you can, I just want this to be. Mike, did yours go up? You need to leave it on, because I can't see them. I need them all on at the same time.
I I thought I did.
For some reason, mine only stays for like thirty seconds and then it goes away.
Great, they disappear on their own.
Well, it looks like you, there's three.
Is it there?
Uh yes, so there's four yeses and everyone else is no. So how many nos is that? One, two, three, four, five, six, six nos, five yeses, or four yeses, so the motion fails. Okay, moving on. Um. Our next piece is PG Policy Discussion, Executive Limitations Policy Two Point Nine Equity, that is in your packet. Um I'm going to let Jean speak to it if she would like.
So uh the last discussion of the equity policy by this board, there were a number of recommendations that they wanted the RNESU board to consider. In the meantime, when the Barstow Board received the same policy that you looked at for consideration, they consulted with their policy governance consultant, uh Val Gardner. And um Val recommended that honestly, if it's going to be an equity policy, it needs to be part of your policy governance policies. So that the superintendent is held accountable and must create that thirteen-page monitoring report, or whatever it turns out to be that Bill spoke of earlier, around what it is you'd like to say with equity. So taking your comments in mind, as a matter of fact, um in front of you tonight, you have a new version, so this is back on first reading. Um Rutland Northeast has passed this for first reading, Barstow has passed this for first reading, and um. In front of, and it's in front of you tonight for a first reading. Um I can put it up if people would like. Shoot.
So this would be a first reading, Jean, correct, um about bringing it into as one of our policies?
Correct, there it is.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion and then we can discuss?
So moved.
So I heard Becky's uh move it, and Derek, were you a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, questions? Um. Uh Kevin? Oh, Kevin, you're you're muted. We can't hear you.
Sorry to do this to your timeline, Lori, but I have another statement to read. Reaction to me at the April seventh meeting was very instructive. In fact, it was an object lesson in how critical race theory actually works. First came manufactured indignation based on deliberately false presumption that anyone who questions anti-racist ideology must be denying the existence of racism. Next came the claim from people who know nothing about me that I needed to be educated. Perhaps they should read my scholarship in African-American history and get back. Finally came the sciret screaming from someone unrecognized by the chair, that white males have no right to an opinion on these matters and must be forced only to listen. This from the people who claim they want to have a conversation about race. Here's a newsflash, they're not interested in conversation. They are interested, however, in making you and your kids all in line. Let's call it by name. Any ideology that says people don't have the right to think and speak for themselves because of their gender or the color of their skin is both sexist and racist. At the opposite of what democracy in Vermont is supposed to be about. It's also profoundly hostile, the idea of education itself, which is something that should gravely concern this board, as well as our district's parents. To what they were saying about me. They were saying that my forty years of studying and scholarship don't matter. They're saying that my academic qualifications don't matter. They're saying that it doesn't matter that I researched the Confederate flag in Mississippi, that I resurrect, I'm not going to finish, Lori, sorry, or that I resurrected the story of the UVM's personal.
I will end the meeting, because here's the thing.
Go ahead and end it, Lori. I'm not giving up the floor. Go ahead and end it, Lori. I'm not going to give up the floor. I'm getting to the policy.
Then you need to get to the policy, please.
Please don't interrupt. There's a line of argument here that's that's important to get through. I'm going to get through it, or you're going to have to end the meeting.
Well, then I guess we're ending the meeting. So thank you, everybody, for your time. I am, I told you to get to your, to the point, and the point is two point nine.
Lori, you told me to get to the point, you interrupted me last time, too, and and uh and a very important point, and then you let people speak over us and interrupt and, you know, um and get like that. Um I I it's really important that we get these arguments out there and.
But I want to talk about two point nine, and I understand your frustration, but what I want to talk about is what's important to our kids. And two point nine might be important to our kids. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. So I would like to hear what your thoughts are on two point nine, and then I would like to.
You're hearing them from me, Lori, and I'm saying that this, that these policies are profoundly hostile to the idea of education itself.
Okay, so that's, so that's what you think. So can I move on and hear what other people have to think?
I'm not done yet, Lori, I'm sorry. So you either have to end the meeting or you have to let me continue.
Ooh.
Well, no, Claire.
Sorry.
Um, okay, then you force my hand and we will cancel the meeting. So thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to submit this to the meeting, to the minutes and um.
That's fine. You have it your way. I I'm the chair, and I told you that you needed to pull it together, and you don't want to, so.
I've got it together. I'm I'm.
Just mute him.
I'm one, I'm one.
I don't have that.
One paragraph away from from talking about the specifics of this policy.
This is, so talk about the specifics of the policy, Kevin, please.
All right, the truth is that people interested in critical race theory are not interested in education. They're absolutely not interested in teaching kids.
Is that what two point nine is talking about?
Two sentences away. They're interested instead in indoctrination, which is what this policy will give us. You could drive a truck through how open this policy is to abuse. Section five, provide an environment that supports the creation.
Good night, everyone.